Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead and call this meeting November 10th, 2014 Legislative Session of Salisbury City Council to Order. Just a couple of quick announcements. If you happen to have a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind turning that on silent for us, or vibrate, and if you've got an important call, if you could take it out in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and just wanted to make a quick reminder that we have a lot of community events coming up tomorrow. We have a 7:15 prayer breakfast at the Civic Center, 11 o'clock ceremony at the Veterans Memorial, also at the Civic Center, and a 1 o'clock ceremony on the steps of Holloway Hall. I'm probably missing some. It seems like every time I turn around, there's another event scheduled for tomorrow. So if anyone else knows of any, please feel free to speak now. You need not forever hold your peace. And also want to say thank you to everyone for their support, especially city staff for their support of the Hero Day, and thank you especially to Mayor Iarton for coming out and making that a special event this Saturday. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Reverend David Michelle to lead us in prayer.
Let me begin with Psalm 47. Clap your hands, oh you people, shout to God with a cry of joy. The Lord most high is to be feared; he is the great king over all the earth. He subdues the peoples under us and the nations under his feet. He chooses our inheritance for us, the pride of Jacob whom he loves. God has gone up with a shout, the Lord with the sound of the ram's horn. Sing praises to God, sing praises, praises to our king, sing praises, for God is king of all the earth. Sing praises with all your skill. God reigns over the nations; God sits upon his holy throne. The nobles of the people have gathered together with the people of the God of Abraham. The rulers of the earth belong to God, and he is highly exalted. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold, in visit we pray, the cities of the earth, especially the city of Salisbury. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest, enabled leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures with different talents may find one another, one another, the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And now, if I may, on this eve of Veterans Day, let me say a prayer for the veterans. O judge of the nations, we remember before you with grateful hearts the men and women of our country, who in the day of decision ventured much for the liberties we now enjoy. Grant that we may not rest until all the people of this land share the benefits of true freedom and gladly accept its disciplines. This we ask in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. So join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have several special presentations this evening. The first, Mayor Iarton.
Mr. Council President, Council, good evening. Since 1993, Maryland's cities and towns have celebrated Municipal Government Works Month each November in an effort to promote citizens' awareness and of the interest in the government and in their communities. So it falls to me this evening to do a proclamation for Municipal Government Works Month and to take an opportunity to thank all of our employees that represent us every day out in our neighborhoods and throughout the city, cleaning up the river, collecting our trash and our recyclables, our police and fire protection, the staff at the Salisbury Zoo, our accountants and our engineers in all parts of our city working hard for us every day. And I'd like to just take a minute to recognize longtime employees like Debbie Stam, Howard Landon, Bill Holland, and Tom Stevenson. Between them, over 120 years of service to our city. So I say to our employees this evening that our citizens and our elected officials are proud of your work, and we look forward to you being here every day, making Salisbury the best it can be. Whereas the city of Salisbury was incorporated in 1854, and whereas Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government allowing citizens' access, direct access, to elected officials and employees, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites and structures to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. And whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation in the city of Salisbury, is proud to promote municipal government awareness. Now therefore, I, James Iarton Jr., Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 2014 as Municipal Government Works Month in our city, and am joined by the members of the Maryland Municipal League to promote the awareness and interest of our citizens in the city of Salisbury's local government. So that is our proclamation for Municipal Government Works Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, I will invite Ruth Baker and LeAnn Gunning to come up and give us a presentation on the Warwick Community College's Driver's Education Program.
Okay, I'll just, I'm actually not going to present. I'm going to introduce my colleague, Ruth Baker, the continuing education. I go first and foremost to Warwick, and thank you for this opportunity to present to you and tell you a little bit about our driver ed program. LeAnn Gunning, my colleague, is actually the one who's working directly with the program. She knows a lot we're about to learn, so she's going to be running you through the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for having me. Hopefully you can hear me. My husband always says I'm very loud, maybe he's upstairs and I'm downstairs. Very excited about our driver education program. I'm so excited that I brought a driver's education car over here, and I thought that after my presentation, we'll go out and do some peril parking and, you know, freshen your skills up. That's what we do at Warwick. We're always refreshing. So I really do appreciate you having me on. And I'm going to try to figure out this, hopefully this is going to work okay for me. We have all this training at Warwick on how to use all this stuff, so I'm going to try to use it here tonight. Before I get going about driver's ed, I just want to talk a little bit about continuing education workforce development. How many people have taken a non-credit course at the college? My goodness. Okay, well, hopefully we'll see more of you. A lot of people, it still amazes me, the college has been here since 1975, and a lot of people still don't realize that we have a non-credit arm of the college. So before I get into driver's ed, I just want to touch base on that a little bit. We have our schedule that goes out three times a year. This is our fall schedule. Our winter schedule will be coming up very soon with actual registration beginning in December of this year, which is a little early, so we're going to see how that goes. We do have online registration for many of our courses. While our mission has not changed in regards to offering non-credit courses for the college, our motto maybe has changed slightly because we're now talking more about careers versus just taking a course. And we're talking about professional license, certification courses. The college has what we call homegrown continuing education certificates. I'm working on one right now with some human resources professionals to put together a leadership supervisory certificate. So you could be a person that's been out in the workforce for many years, you really have never supervised, but certainly you want to grow in your job. So going through that certificate program could offer you the opportunity to put an added credential onto your resume. So we have a lot going on. We have everything from business and leadership, to entrepreneurship, to allied health, to computers, to childcare, and real estate, transportation, which I'm going to talk about tonight. Ruth, what am I missing? My goodness, we do so much, it's just exhausting. It's a miracle that we're even out tonight. Usually we're in bed by now. The other thing that we do that a lot of people don't realize is we also have our workforce training solutions. This is our customized training for local businesses. We can take the training to you, or you can come to us. We can work with you and hire an instructor to get that training done, or possibly maybe you have somebody that's a great instructor, but you just have, you need a space to do the training. So I have information, I don't know, I can leave some behind on my way out if anybody wants to pick up any of our materials. So, on to driver's ed. That's why we're here, right? Okay. Basically, this whole concept came up, it's been over a year and a half ago, believe it or not, where our college president, Dr. Hoy, was at a local visionary committee meeting and was talking to Sandy Fitzgerald, who has Bohanka, and it was brought to his attention that many motorists locally do not have driver's licenses. And the scary thing is, a lot of them were out on the road without a license or without insurance, and it's really a bigger issue than he even imagined. And then he learned that a lot of these people, believe it or not, are Warwick students. So that was obviously a concern. So many of you know you need a driver's license. You need a driver's license, obviously, to get to work, because most of us don't live close enough to walk to work. I know I have a 30-minute commute every morning. Or you might need that driver's license for identity. So Dr. Hoy came to Ruth and said, Ruth, I want you to get driver's education up and running for the college. And she came down to my office about two minutes later and said, LeAnn, Dr. Hoy wants us to get driver's education up and running at Warwick. And I said, yay, because I am just so, you know, underworked and, no. I was very excited to participate. It was a new program for me. I manage many other, but it certainly was giving something back to the community that's very beneficial, very meaningful, and that's why I'm in the job that I'm in, because I like giving back. So we got right on it, we got very, very busy. We realized that one reason why a lot of people do not have a driver's license was the lack of financial resources. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our tuition assistance. But I took all this information in, but being the workforce development professional that I am, I decided, you know, I better do a little bit more research before the college decides to go in this direction. So I went online, and, you know, the internet is just so helpful, and I found several reasons why maybe we should have driver education at the college. We're still working on the dogs. I don't know if it's going to happen. The lady in the upper left hand, that looks like my mother, you know. But anyway, I thought, okay, Dr. Hoy, you're right. With your research, my research, we are ready to go. But the most exciting thing is Sandy was so generous in providing the college with two driver education vehicles. I wish she was here tonight, because I really would like to personally thank her once again. Here's a picture of all of us when she brought the cars to us. I think my hair color's different then. So we are very excited to have two cars that we can start using and get them out on the road. So hopefully you're going to see these cars around town, and I always tell people, when you see any of our Warwick driver education cars or tractor trailers, just kind of, you know, move a little away, give them some space, because they are learning. We were all there at one point in time in our lives. So, about the course itself, there's our certification. I've told people, if you look closely, you see my kiss mark when I got that mail from NVA, because NVA is very rigorous with providing approval for anybody that'd like to start up a driver's education course, rightfully so. It is a 36-hour course. It is 30 hours in the classroom and six hours behind the wheel. The 30 hours in the classroom, we're going to have some day classes, evening classes. Mainly the weekends will be more behind the wheel, but we're going to see how it all works out. But we're definitely, that's a great thing about continuing ed, is we're very flexible to satisfy our students. We do have two wonderful instructors right now, but I'm looking for more, so if anybody in here is interested in possibly teaching, please feel free to contact me. We'd love to have you. There is a certification process. The college is willing to help you get through with that, so just give me a call or send me an email. We are accepting students 16 years of age or older, and beforehand, students do need to get their learner's permit, so there is a process involved. And our tuition is, right now, it's $300. So that is right in line with all of our competitors, but again, we do have tuition assistance, which is probably the most exciting thing, because that's really what our students need. So that is a first time for us having an internal scholarship fund set aside for driver education. We're going to run this as a pilot, and then hopefully we will be expanding that tuition assistance to some of our other programs that we have at the college. It is on what we call a sliding scale, so you can get anywhere from $50 to $250 tuition assistance. I have already, I've awarded a $250 tuition assistance letter, so I'm sure that person's very excited, as excited as I was to do that. And I'm currently working with some other students, which interestingly enough, the ages are between 23 and 40 years of age that have applied for tuition assistance at this point in time. And then for any full-paying students, the college is going to take $50 of their tuition and allocate it back into our scholarship fund. So it's going to be a continual replenishment, and we're just, we're excited. I mean, it's the first time that we've had that kind of a resource for non-credit students. So I just want to also toot my horn, literally, for some of our other transportation program area courses that we have. A lot of people don't realize, some people have seen, they call it our moving billboard, our Class A, we have two tractor trailers, and we also have our Class B dump Truck. Our biggest, newest thing is our commercial Class B bus driver training that will provide somebody with both the S for the school and the P for passenger endorsements. So a lot of people say, well, why did you get a school bus? Why aren't we doing like a short transit bus? Well, it gives our students more opportunity to either drive for possibly the Board of Ed, or drive for short transit, or possibly Ocean City. And then I also put our motorcycle safety emblem up there. That's not one of my courses, but I certainly want to share that with everybody as well. Some people don't realize that we also have motorcycle safety training right at the college, usually on the weekends, when people are at the parking lot. And that is the end, literally. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions. I did bring some materials with me, if I can leave them to people to pick up.
Absolutely. Just a quick question on the tuition assistance. Is that available to, how many slots do you have tuition assistance available for? Would most students be eligible and receive, or what's the?
It really depends on their financial situation. Right now, I mean, we're just starting out, so our bucket is very full. I would certainly, if you know of people that are interested in it, to go ahead and submit their documentation. I did bring information about just the general course itself, and then also tuition assistance package, if I can distribute, so.
I think the real beauty of the program, even though it's competitively priced, is that, you know, at a community college in Wycomico County, you can go and get tuition assistance to have a more affordable program. So I think that's fantastic. It's a great asset to our community.
Absolutely. We're very excited about it. Yep, definitely.
Thank you, questions?
I was struck by the age range that you gave, up to 43 years old. And that does demonstrate the need that we have here, that someone has gotten through 43 years without a license on the eastern shore, where nothing is close to you too much.
I know.
I would shock you. I was 45 when I got my license.
Is that right?
Yes. I was a walker.
Were you?
And you see what happens when you drive a car.
Well, I know a lot of my friends from Smith Island that are now, never had a license, but now moving on shore, yeah, getting licenses and stuff. So, yeah, it's very exciting. We're very excited about it. I know my instructors are just, they're ready to go. So we're very blessed to have some great people on staff.
That's great. One more question.
Anything else?
When it comes to the actual testing, I know that another hurdle that people face beyond the payment for the course is a vehicle to take the test in. Now, is this vehicle used for the test as well, or do they have to find?
We are going to, we're working on that, on calculating people being able to actually take the car and test as well. I know the one question I had, and I don't think any driving school does this, but there's the also, the other requirement with driver's education, it's not just a six hours behind the wheel with the class, but it's a 60 hours with your mentor on the side, which is usually a parent or what have you. So I did have, actually, it was one of our staff members asked me, she doesn't want to have to be with her daughter for 60 hours behind the wheel, she thinks they'll kill each other, but she said, could we pay to have one of the instructors do that 60 hours? But that's just, that's too much time to get a car tied up, because it'd be very expensive for somebody to have to pay for that.
There may be some people in the community that are willing to do mentorships in that way.
That's a good idea, too.
That would step up and help someone do that.
That's a good idea. So, yes. Anything else?
Yes, how many students can you accommodate per semester, or how long is the course?
The course is 36 hours. It's 30 hours in the classroom that we can take, up to 30 people as per NVA rules. In the cars, it can only be one-on-one with the instructor and the student.
So you can get, how many people could you get through in a semester, say?
NVA, their guidelines are, we have to be able to get somebody through in 18 weeks. However, unless the student says, you know, I got to step out for a couple of weeks because something's happened or what have you, that's on the student. But we need to be able to get those students through the course in 18 weeks. We have to promise that with our resources.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else, good questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate it. Should I just leave stuff over there?
Yeah, you want to leave it right over there.
And thank you to Sandy Fitzgerald Angelo for making those donations.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Bierman, Dick Bierman, up from Lower Shore Clinic. How are you?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmen and Women, I am Richard Bierman. I am the clinic director at Lower Shore Clinic. You also may know me from Go-getters, which I've been running, or sometimes it's been running me for 25 years, I was surprised to find last week. So I came here to talk to you a bit about the clinic. The Lower Shore Clinic grew out of the Health Department Mental Health Clinic. In 1997, the state moved from a grant system of reimbursement for clinics to a fee-for-service system, and the Wycomico Health Officer Judy Sensenbrenner recognized that the mental health clinic out there in Spring Hill Annex was not going to be able to pay its own way. So she put it up for privatization. The hospital stepped up first. They had the inpatient unit, and obviously having an outpatient unit would be greatly to their advantage. But two and a half years later, having lost an enormous amount of money, they went back to Dr. Sensenbrenner and said, we can't do this. And she came to me, we had had a clinic license, but no clinic, for a year or so, because I'd been thinking about doing it, but the hospital's experience frankly terrified me. We incorporated the clinic as a separate corporation from Go-getters, so that if we had to jettison it quickly, we could. In any case, we started with 450 clients that the hospital had, and simply asked them to walk a little further down the street where we set up at 505 East Main Street in 2000. For 14 years, we've been running a mental health clinic there. It has a couple of interesting hallmarks. One of them is, we turn nobody away for inability to pay. We take people who are covered with Medicaid, Medicare, commercial carrier insurance, or no insurance at all. We have a sliding fee scale, but the truth is, though I'm not wild about publicizing it, we don't turn people away even if they don't pay that. So that's just my board's wish and my wish, and we've been able to do it with about a 7% charity care rate. Clinic's budget runs about, or used to run about a million and a half, so that 7% was exactly the $80,000 a year that we have run in red since I've been running the clinic for 14 years. The other thing that we do that I think is worth talking about is, we have a walk-in, same-day access for all new clients. So if you wished to be seen at the clinic, you would simply present yourself at 8:00 in the morning, every morning, Monday through Friday, and you would be seen. Every now and then, we have to turn somebody away, and if we do, we make an appointment for them. But for the most part, it works really well with us, for us, to see people when they're ready. And it works extremely well for them, because the way mental health works is, nobody wants to see the shrink, you know? And you've got some sort of crisis in your home, there's bickering, there's loud arguments, an adolescent child storms out into the night, and then you have a crisis, and you call the health, you call the clinic, and if they have the usual thing, they say, you're in luck, we can get you in in two weeks. And, you know, in two weeks, the crisis has resolved itself, and as a result, the national no-show rate for first appointments in mental health is about 40%. Ours is about zero, because we don't make appointments, except, as I said, if we have to turn somebody away. So if you are ready to be seen, you simply walk in, and you get seen that day. It's something I've wanted to do for years, and it isn't merely humanitarian, although it has that purpose, but it also saves us an enormous amount of money, because we don't have the no-show rate. We have, we focus on no-shows a lot. My sense is that people have some responsibility to play their part. We have responsibility to provide them the service, but they have a responsibility to use the service responsibly. And so we have worked on people to overcome the difficulties they have getting to their appointments, keeping their appointments, and our no-show rate at the moment for the last two years has been 8%. Before that, it was about 10% for six years. That compares typically to a national no-show rate of 15% to 20%. So I'm very pleased with what we're doing. Two years ago, we added primary care, based on the observation that people with severe mental illness live lives that on average are 20 to 25 years shorter than the rest of ours. That seems terribly unfair, and it is because their health habits are problematic. They have, they seem to fall prey to non-contagious chronic illnesses, diabetes, hypertension, cardiac issues, asthma. And so we talked a local doctor, Rob Riley, out of retirement. He seems to be having a good time, and he works for us half-time. Talked our foundation into doubling the size of the building, and just as we were ready to open, the Village of Hope, which had run a very good, basically, charity care clinic for many years here, closed, and we were suddenly inundated. We went from 950 mental health clients to our current slightly more than 1,900 clients in one year. We, it's a year I hope not to repeat, but it worked. We were able to see people as they presented themselves, and we now have almost 2,000 clients. Integrated care is what we're trying to provide, primary care, women's health, and mental health care. Most recent trouble we've gotten ourselves into is to open a pharmacy. That started filling prescriptions last week, so we will, we hope, be able to send people out with some medication in their hands, not merely a script that they might or might not fill. And what I'm looking at next, once we get that halfway digested, is dentistry, because that is absolutely the most screaming need for people who are poor. And that is pretty much our clientele, though we will serve anybody in the three-county area, and in fact, we serve people in Dorchester County, too. Really appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about this. When you next drive down Main Street, you see that, I hope you think beautifully, an artistically colored building on your left, but maybe it's just strange to you, but in any case, it stands out. My clinic administrator, a young woman with wonderful taste, did all the design work, and I'm very pleased with that. When you next see that, you'll know a little bit about what goes on there, and the take-home messages I would like you to think about are, we would like to serve people regardless of their ability to pay, we want to see them when they're ready to be seen, and we want to provide a one-stop-shop smorgasbord of services to look after their health, and this is for our county here. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm not asking you for anything at this point.
I have one, I have a question.
I reserve for us to come back sometime.
I have a question. I'm familiar with the building. There used to be no bus station.
No, that was, that's Go-getters. The clinic building actually used to be, yes, the one next door, used to be an automobile shop, I think.
Yeah, well, it's all in that same era.
Absolutely.
My question is, do you have? Um, my question is, do you have, how many homeless people do you serve?
Quite a few, but we try to keep them from remaining homeless. When we can, the clinic refers people to Go-Getters, so that we can get them an advocate to work with them and get them some housing. But, you know, we do serve a lot of homeless people, they certainly, certainly walk in. It's a greater difficulty for us, because it's hard to get up with them sometimes when we need to, but it's open to folks regardless of whether they have a roof over their heads when they first walk in.
Do you see a growing clientele with them, homeless?
Shani, I don't know if I would say that, I think it's been pretty constant in much of my time here, it's been, you know, it hasn't got better, hasn't gotten worse, it's an interesting nagging problem of urban areas.
I could, one comment about the, or one clarification about the pharmacy that you've opened, when I toured there a couple of months ago, the first question I said when you were opening, you said you were opening that, and we toured, it's a beautiful area, you do not carry opiates?
That's correct, please make that as publicly well-known as possible, thanks for reminding me, we chose not to carry narcotics, thought that people who have a prescription for narcotics, how did my, a pharmacist friend of mine said that they won't have any difficulty finding a place to fill it, so, and they're motivated to get it filled. So we didn't feel that was a terrible thing, not to carry narcotics. We are open to the public, not merely Lower Shore Clinic clientele, we are going to do our best to meet the lowest prices available in town.
Thank you, I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Bierman, thank you so much.
Thanks you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
I'd like to remove Resolutions Twenty-four fifty-nine and Twenty-four sixty from the consent agenda to be heard directly after the award of bids.
Hold on for a second.
You don't need a second for the consent.
To remove them, we do. All right, okay, on the removal of Resolution Number Twenty-four fifty-nine and Twenty-four sixty to be heard after the consent agenda, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, anything else?
Yes, go for it, Jack.
I'd like to make a motion to remove RFP Zero-two dash one-five Engineering Construction and Inspection Service for Parkside High School Regional Lift Station and Mill Street Pump Station improvements from the Award of Bids.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on removal of RFP Zero-two-one-five from the Award of Bids. Do we have any explanation as to, as to why? Thank you, Ms. Miller.
While she's coming up, the removal of the other two for the Zoo Commission appointments, we're just to change the dates, just so nobody gets nervous.
Yes, very simply, the procurement department requested additional time to review the recommendation.
Okay, that's all, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, all right, and on the amended legislative agenda, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, so move, second.
Okay, I think I got...
Can we get little buzzer things like on Jeopardy?
That's exactly what we need.
They never give me a chance.
You got in there, I'm giving that one.
They have lights like Ocean City.
Really? All right, we'll invest in that one, David. Ms. Nichols?
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the October twentieth, twenty-fourteen work session minutes, October twentieth, twenty-fourteen closed session minutes, the October twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen regular meeting minutes, and Resolution Number Twenty-four fifty-eight approving the appointment of Ursula Earhart to the Historic District Commission for term ending November tenth, twenty-seventeen. The other two items were removed, that's it.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Okay, so the first item removed from the consent agenda is Resolution Number Two-four-five-nine. Entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Two-four-five-nine.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, Two-four-five-nine, I'd like to make a motion, this is appointing Susan Jones, and the term ending should read twelve thirty-one, twenty-fifteen, to keep that appointment in line with other appointments, because they're staggered.
Okay, is there a...
Make a motion to strike eleven-ten, twenty-seventeen, and replace that with twelve thirty-one fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And on Resolution Number Two-four-five-nine, as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, Resolution Number Two-four-six-zero, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. E. Well done. All right, Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, the date on this one should be changed, strike eleven-ten, twenty-seventeen, and replace with twelve thirty-one, twenty-sixteen, for the same purpose.
Any discussion? Is there a second on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Spies? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And on amended Resolution Two-four-six-zero, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
I know at least one of them's here.
I'm sorry?
I know at least one of them's here.
Oh, okay, excellent, good. Thank you.
We are both here.
Thank you for your service.
Okay.
Would you please stand?
Sarah Rain and Miss Jones and, well, they're all here, okay.
Ladies, thank you for your service to the city. We'll now entertain a motion to approve the Award of Bids as amended. All right.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have three items for declaration of surplus this evening. The first is declaration of surplus for parking lot number thirty. In July two thousand and fourteen, the City of Salisbury Administrative Department issued a directive for the procurement department to solicit redevelopment proposals for parking lot number thirty. This parking lot sits at the intersection of West Lake and West Main Streets in downtown Salisbury, and is comprised of several parcels of land totaling one-point-one-zero acres. It's currently used as a public parking lot, of which twenty-five percent of the spaces are occupied by permit holders. The procurement department issued a bid solicitation on Friday, July twenty-fifth, and received one proposal by the due date and time of Friday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, at four P.M., from Green Street Housing. A six-person evaluation committee was formed, comprised of City of Salisbury staff members. In addition to scoring the proposals independently, the committee met several times to discuss the terms of the redevelopment proposal submitted by Green Street Housing. A recommendation was written and forwarded to the City of Salisbury Administrative Department, who in turn has taken the recommendations into consideration for advancement to a closed session with council. As a result of a favorable recommendation from the evaluation committee in regards to the development proposal, the administrative department would like to proceed with declaring lot number thirty surplus and moving forward into negotiations with Green Street Housing. The procurement division requests council's approval to declare lot number thirty surplus, and to allow the City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division to enter into negotiations with Green Street Housing.
Questions?
May I?
Yes.
For the public, you know, I usually don't do this for public information, whoever's looking, this is the, where the poster card used to be years ago, just for someone who may not know the number lot thirty, that's just for general information.
That's right, bounded by West Lake, West Main, the river, and Route fifty, right? All right.
We have a bit of a boardwalk space there as well, do we not? It's...
Bit of a collapsing...
Many people fish there.
Bit of a collapsing boardwalk.
Yes. I didn't know if we paid any attention to that in what we're going to be doing with it.
No, but there are, there is a pending item on council's pending items list, addressing Riverwalk ordinance and a requirement that Riverwalk, to the city standard, be included anywhere where we have waterfront, and especially on city-owned property, that's something we should be, I think, strongly enforcing.
Absolutely, it's, you know, it's really a public fishing pier at this point, and I think it should remain the same.
Could even be enhanced.
That's on your agenda, though, correct?
I thi, I think it's on a pending, pending, way down the list. We'll get there one day. Okay?
Okay. The next item is declaration of surplus for a Glock Automatic Pistol Model Twenty-one. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following handgun as surplus. It's a Glock Automatic Pistol Model Twenty-one, serial number WG six-zero-eight. Upon this declaration of surplus, and is approved by the council, the handgun will be given to retired police officer Captain Paul G. Simon. Additional details are noted in the department memo.
I think probably at this time, just worth thanking Captain Simon for his decades of service to the city.
Absolutely.
There was a nice tribute to him at the police promotion ceremony that the mayor and chief Duncan did, but worth mentioning that, he served the city for what, twenty-six, twenty-seven years?
And a smile on his face the entire time.
Without a doubt.
Good officer.
Very good. The last item is also declaration of surplus from the Salisbury Police Department. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following item surplus. It's an office copier machine, black and white, the department, the information is listed in your memo about the model number and serial number. Upon declaration of surplus as approved by city council, the copier will be sold through property dot com, propertyroom.com, and a copy of the departmental memo is included as well.
Also worth mentioning that this copy machine served for about twenty-seven years faithfully.
Does this copier have a scanning mechanism, do you know?
I do not, I don't know.
I don't know, little bird's doing it.
Do you need me to ask?
Yes, absolutely, because if it has a hard drive, that needs to be wiped before it is sent out, because everything that's been copied or scanned on that machine is stored in that memory, and if it's not wiped out, that ends up in a warehouse somewhere, and lots of people's information get out, and coming from a police department, that's pretty frightening, twenty-seven years worth, or however long it's been there. That's a lot of information, and I would ask that that be dealt with, or the hard drive removed, before that is sent out.
Will be.
Thank you.
Let's look this up and see.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the amended Award of Bids, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is Resolution Two-four-six-one to approve the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for the Booth Street Apartments' Phase One development. Entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Arrington?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Oh, I'll brief, I'll briefly go over the memo and the packet. It says, "Attached is a resolution for consideration to waive the capacity fee associated with the Booth Street Apartments' Phase One. Also attached is a letter dated September twelfth from Penrose Property LLC requesting the waiver. The capacity fee waiver request was discussed at the October sixth city council work session and received a favorable response. The Booth Street Apartment Phase One project consists of demolishing an existing fifty-unit apartment complex and constructing a new eighty-four-unit apartment complex. Since fifty equivalent dwelling units are currently associated to, allocated to this property, the proposed project will utilize thirty-four new EDUs at the current capacity fee rate of three thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. This equates to one hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Public Works has reviewed the waiver request and found the request meets the criteria outlined in Resolution Number Twelve-eleven for affordable housing." I'll read for your hearing Resolution Number Twenty-four sixty-one, "A resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for a development known as Booth Street Apartment Phase One and Affordable Housing Development. Penrose Property LLC has requested a waiver of the capacity fee for its development known as Booth Street Apartment Phase One, which is located on Booth Street. The proposed development requires approximately eighty-four equivalent dwelling units of water and sewer service, of which fifty equivalent dwelling units is already assigned to this property. Penrose Property LLC has requested a capacity fee waiver of thirty-four equivalent dwelling units, and the current, and the current capacity fee for thirty-four equivalent dwelling units is one hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. One of the city's goals is to encourage the development of affordable housing in the City of Salisbury. The city council approved a capacity fee waiver process under Resolution Number Twelve-eleven for public-sponsored or affordable housing, which means any dwelling unit built or financed under a government program, regulation, or binding agreement that limits for at least ten years the price of, or rent charged for the unit in order to make the unit affordable to households earning less than sixty percent of the area medium income adjusted for family size. Penrose Property LLC has committed to providing affordable housing at the Booth Street Apartments' Phase One to households earning less than sixty percent of the area medium income adjusted for family size for at least thirty years."
Ms. Arrington, I have a number of questions, and I think I know the answers to them, but bear in mind, I wasn't here for the work session where we discussed this. Three, three questions. First, the property owner is and will remain the Wycomica County Housing Authority, correct?
Patrick from...
Absolutely, would you mind coming? Would you mind coming to the microphone? Thank you so much.
Good evening. So first of all, thank you for entertaining this. The, so the answer is that the housing authority will retain ownership of the land underlying, and they're going to ground lease the buildings to a development entity...
To Penrose.
Which is jointly comprised of Penrose and the Wycomica County Housing Authority, so we're partners in the project.
Okay, thank you. Second question, this is in line with our capacity waiver for affordable housing, correct?
Yes.
And third question is, what is the development timeline?
So we're currently at about ninety, ninety-five percent completion of our construction drawings. We've gotten development plan approval through the county, and we're, our current schedule has us closing, reaching finance, closing, excuse me, in March, and we would start construction along that timeline in April. Total construction duration about fifteen months or so, so completion in, if I'm doing my math right, early, early twenty-seventeen.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes?
I wasn't here either, got so fast with the approval, I got there really. Are they, are there people living in those apartments that are being demolished now?
There, there is, but there's also, along with our grant, is a relocation plan.
Okay, that's all I need, though.
What have individuals that work with their families and their needs, make sure they are relocated and through that process.
And your name again, your name, the lady's?
My name's Suzanne Brown.
Okay, Suzanne, okay.
It's just worth clarifying that the relocation would be temporary, and they all, current residents have the right to return to the completed property.
Okay, good.
Some of them are going to your other building, the existing building, and then they'll... Some of them are going to your other building, the existing building, and then they'll shift back, and that one will be done next, correct?
Correct, and when we, when the
The second half, I'm sorry.
Redeveloped, there'll be a sequencing of buildings, so although it may take fifteen to sixteen months to build the entire eighty-four units, the families will not wait until that eighty-four building, apartment is built. They will, as soon as the first building is delivered, then the families will be turned in. So it won't be as lengthy a time.
I, I guess I do have one more question, and, and this is something we, we probably need to explore as a city moving forward. Um, and there, there was a, a state analysis of affordable housing needs in each county. Uh, and I've seen it for Wycomico County, and I think it was even at the municipal level. Is there the demand for the additional thirty-four units? I mean, do you see the, the demand in your studies and in your analysis at Penrose or at, at Wycomico Housing Authority for those additional units, even with the other additional, excuse me, other affordable housing projects coming online?
Absolutely.
You do?
And we have to, as, as a sort of a, a function of the financing that we're using, which is, um, state allocated low-income housing tax credits, we had to put together a very detailed, rigorous, uh, market study. Um, and, and, you know, rents are set appropriately to sort of capture the demand, and, and it's definitely there.
You do see that demand?
Yep, absolutely.
There's still a waitlist in Wycomico County, is that correct, that's not open?
We do have a waiting list, which is closed, and it would be a great opportunity to serve those families.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? All right. All those in favor of resolution number two four six one, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our, our agenda is the approval of ordinance number two three zero five. This is second reading. This is the amendment of the FY fifteen budget with, uh, for funds for the traffic equipment repairs and maintenance. Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two three zero five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is the second reading of this ordinance, uh, for the repair of the traffic signal equipment in East Main Street at Truitt Street. Uh, whereas the contractor paid for the cost of the repairs in lieu of making the repairs, and whereas the City of Salisbury Traffic Division and Public Works Department will make the repairs to the traffic signal, and whereas the traffic equipment department budget will need to be increased to accommodate these efforts, now therefore being ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget and traffic equipment budget be and are hereby amended as follows. With an increase in the miscellaneous revenue oh one zero 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 dash four five six nine one one account by four thousand one hundred dollars, and increase in the traffic equipment count two two zero 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 dash five three four three oh two budget by an equivalent amount. And this all resulted from a private contractor damaging that equipment.
Any questions for Mr. Tillman? Hearing none. All, all those in favor, please signify your, your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mark. Okay. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number two three zero six for first reading. Uh, this is the stormwater utility. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance two three zero six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tillman?
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, amending chapter thirteen Public Services of the City Code by adding chapter thirteen point three zero for the purpose of establishing a stormwater utility under the direction and supervision of the Public Works Department and further establishing a stormwater utility fee system. Whereas the city maintains a system of stormwater facilities, including but not limited to inlets, pipes, dams, manholes, channels, ditches, drainage, retention, and detention basins, infiltration facilities, and other components, as well as the natural waterways. And whereas the stormwater system in the city needs to be upgraded, improved, and regularly maintained, and whereas the existing stormwater system is designed to convey storm wa- stormwater to limit flooding, not treat stormwater to improve water quality. And whereas water quality is degrading due to erosion and discharge of nutrients, metals, oils, grease, toxic materials, and other substances into and through the stormwater system, and whereas the public health, safety, and welfare is adversely affected by poor ambient water quality and extreme flooding that results from inadequate management of both quality and quantity of stormwater, and whereas all real property in the city uses and benefits from the maintenance of the stormwater system, and whereas the extent of the use of the stormwater system by each property is dependent on factors that influence runoff, including land use and the amount of impervious surface on the property, and whereas the cost of improving, maintaining, operating, and monitoring the stormwater system should be allocated to the extent practical to all property owners based on the impact of runoff from the impervious surface areas of their property on the stormwater system. And whereas management of the stormwater system to protect public health, safety, and welfare requires that adequate revenues be generated to provide funding for the operation, improvement, maintenance, and monitoring of the stormwater system. And whereas it is in the interest of the public to finance the stormwater system adequately with a user charge that is reasonable and deemed by the city to be equitable, so that each user of the system pays to the extent to which each user contributes to the need for it, now therefore being ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, chapter thirteen be amended by adding section thirteen point three zero. Uh, the details of the stormwater utility system would take me the rest of the evening to read through.
I think you should.
He only came up for breath once during the day, anyway. We've probably heard him.
Uh, w- w- we could summarize it, or if you would like, I will go on.
I, I think we're good. Okay. Questions for Mr. Tillman? Questions for Mr. Molds or Ms. Pollak? I know we've been through this document many times.
But I'd just say thank you to all of you for the incredible amount of time and work and detail that you went into, and also say thank you to the staff for being able to put together a stormwater, uh, utility that recognizes that what our detractors say is billions of dollars, and what the state says is billions of dollars, but knowing that we, the elected officials here in Salisbury, have the ability to come up with our own program with the help of the state to get this done. So again, my thank you to you, and my thank you to, uh, Mr. Molds and Ms. Pollak in the, uh, Public Works Department.
Well, I'll, I'll add. Um, I, I think staff has done an incredible job addressing and providing a very nuanced and fair system to address this, uh, what was really a fiscally irresponsible situation, um, and providing a, a better method for addressing, uh, what is an infrastructure that we've had for decades and not fa- funded or taken care of as we should. So, thank you.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Heath.
Um, I, I think the other thing, this is, this is one of those that is a difficult choice for sure. But I think that, um, and I just had a discussion with Mr. Molds this evening, earlier this evening. We should still, uh, look for ways to mitigate, uh, that, that we can go on, that maybe are new and novel. Uh, we discussed pervious sidewalks, ways of filtration, and, and new things that are coming up that have, that are now in process of being tried, um, to see if there is a better method of doing it rather than traditionally how to do it. Uh, and, and again, this is, this is a hard one to swallow, but I think that from, um, our responsibility for public safety for sure, uh, this, this is an issue we need to, we, that needs to be addressed.
Well, and part, part of that, I said fiscal irresponsibility, but part of that irresponsibility is piping, you know, collecting it and piping it, uh, and treating wastewater, excuse me, treating stormwater as if it's wastewater. You know, it's environmentally and fiscally irresponsible. Other questions, comments from council?
Yeah. One of the other things that has come up through this discussion is reexamining our parking requirements and how appropriate they are. If we require X number of parking spaces, and then we're going to turn around and bill based on the number of parking spaces that you have, uh, it seems like we need to have that discussion and make sure that that's in line with what we're trying to do here. Also, um, looking for places to, uh, that might offer grant monies to make, take that extra step to make it pervious surface rather than impervious, if they're already going to be paving, to try to find ways to mitigate that and cut that down at that point.
Well, on, on parking, um, let me just add sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I see it's on the list, but it's not on a dated list.
Right.
It's still on the, we need to talk about it.
Well, and the planning commission has for years talked, uh, about doing something about it, and, you know, especially in the city, but also in the county, reducing, reducing those requirements, doing, you know, what Worcester County and so many other places in the country have done, and having parking maximums instead of parking minimums. Uh, you know, uh, we constantly give waivers for the developers because they don't need the parking that we demand, and it's irresponsible that we require all of that. And it's costly to, to development, and so it hurts economic development, and it increases the burden on property owners.
Yeah, because now it's not only going to hurt at the time of building, it's going to continue to hurt on these fees.
That's right. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? I, I do have one request for public comment on this ordinance. Ms. Gibson?
Kaye Gibson, resident of Salisbury. Here we go again. Rainwater tax. That's what it adds up to. God only knows, the last governor humiliated us all through the whole country with our rainwater tax. We don't need it. We don't need to call it this. We don't need a separate way of handing, putting our hand in the taxpayer's pocket. Bottom line is, you already taxed us, property tax. It's a deductible tax. It's a tax that's been used so far to remediate stormwater i- issues. We need to continue to use it. We don't need a separate utility tax. Uh, Carroll County has met the state requirements and gotten state approval for the way that they have created a stormwater remediation fund. They use property tax money, and they put it aside. They are still qualified for grants. This is just another excuse to go into residents' pockets. We don't need it. It's not necessary. It's not required by the state. We've been using property tax to remediate the issues, and we need to continue to do it. At least with that, we do get the, as a property owner, tax benefits when we file our taxes at the end of the year. This way, we don't. If this is attached to the water bill, or unless you collect it directly from the property owners, you're going to impact your renters and their abilities to pay. And we come from an area that doesn't have a lot of money, and our renters don't have a lot of extra money. I think we need to just leave it alone, get rid of this, continue to do it out of our property tax revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I think worth noting that, um, when Carroll County did that, they also raised their property taxes, which is something we want to avoid. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Is there, Mr. Council President, is there any way that we could quickly, and if it's not, I understand, but, uh, again, I don't want anyone to get this impression that we're raising the five hundred gazillion dollars in the first year, and, uh, for the, an average-sized lot in Salisbury, it's five dollars a quarter. Uh, so I, um, if, I, I don't know whether, is it referenced in the, in the legislation, the tiers?
I don't
Do we ended up doing?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, well, then I apologize.
Not, not yet, but, um, there is in the memo, uh, timeline for when we'll see that. Um, I think February.
February, March.
February and March?
For setting the fees, yeah.
May I?
For setting fees? Yes.
May, I think I suggested, um, when we did this, it was very difficult for me, um, to support this. I don't fully understand it, but I see the necessity of it. I still, I question some things, but I'm going to support this. But I also think that I, uh, our Public Works Director has agreed to do public information and get the word out so that people can understand why we're doing this, and I think that's very, very important. Uh, it's, it's not a tax, it's a fee. And I think once people understand why we're doing this, because I look at the pipes that they're taking out of the, um, um, Parsons Road the other day, oh, they looked awful. So I understand what, it kind of made me understand why we need to do this. Because you hear about stormwater mains breaking down, you hear about the pipes have been in the, in, under the, since nineteen thirties and forties and fifties, so this is a way to, I think, find a way to help alleviate that, not come under emergency situations. Um, we would have funds to fix it when it should be fixed. So I think the education piece for the public will be a great asset, um, to this particular ordinance, and, um, and they're going to do that.
Absolutely. And beginning with an informational brochure mailing, uh, with assistance from CBF.
In the memo, it does mention that we have removed the portion about putting it on the utility bills and left the language about putting it on the tax bills. Um, it is an interesting point about the deductibility of it if it is a tax versus a, a fee. There are also some other complications with a fee. It's got to be, you know, related. You have to have the nexus for the fee. I, I think it's more appropriate as a fee. It's a user fee. Fees are something you pay if you use whatever the services. A tax is just because you're there, you own the property, or whatever it is. There, there is a difference, um, despite the, the rhetoric to the contrary, but, um, I, I don't know if that's something we, if we put it on the tax bill, is that going to be confusing as far as deductibility? I hadn't considered that before, so I'm just throwing that out.
I, I think the Rockville information was incredibly helpful, in their experience.
Mr. Council President, do you want
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
very quick outline of the next, uh, eight months as to where we are right now to be read into the record at this particular point?
I think that'd be good.
Sure.
Okay. So tonight is the Stormwater Utility Ordinance first reading. That's the tenth of November two thousand and fourteen. We have a mayor's neighborhood roundtable outreach session scheduled for the eighteenth of this month on the third floor here of the Government Office Building. The Stormwater Utility Ordinance second reading is scheduled for the twenty-fourth of November. Uh, impervious area work from ESRGC will be complete by the, uh, first of December. A public works fee analysis, uh, will be presented on the sixteenth of January two thousand and fifteen. An informational, uh, brochure mailing is scheduled for the second day of February two thousand and fifteen. The council is set to set the fee on the second of February two thousand and fifteen. And the stormwater affility, stormwater utility fee ordinance reading is scheduled for the ninth of March two thousand and fifteen, and the second reading would be the twenty-third of March two thousand and fifteen. Sample bills mailed to all properties greater than one EDU, ERU, sorry, is scheduled for the twentieth of April two thousand and fifteen, and, uh, information would be provided to the county about billing information in May of two thousand and fifteen, and the implementation, implementation of the stormwater utility would be complete at the end of the fiscal year, which would be the thirtieth of June two thousand and fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two three zero six, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. All right. No other requests for comments. Anything else for the good of the order?
I do have an announcement to make.
Mr. Spea?
I forgot. You do it. I'll do it, sure.
Mr. Spea?
This is a reminder, uh, because of the Veterans Day holiday, uh, there will be no trash or recycling pickup tomorrow. Uh, the normally, uh, stuff that wouldn't be normally picked up tomorrow would be, would be done next Tuesday. Uh, in addition, next Tuesday, there's also, uh, additional recycling pickup, and that is, uh, for electronics. Is that correct? Yes? That was on the recording, anyway. So, uh, if you've got old computers, uh, printers, TVs, microwaves, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Shani's radio from back in the day.
Shani's radio, right. The, the radio with the tubes in it?
The iPod. She shouldn't have the iPod, right? Before she got the driver's license, right, from earlier tonight.
Anyway, next Tuesday, the seventeenth, get your recyclables out there, the electronics recyclables, at the curb, and somebody will be around to pick them up.
Five four eight three one seven seven to call to have them picked up.
Do you need to have them? Do you need to call?
Do we need to call?
Is it TVs? Televisions?
Do you need to call?
Is it televisions, too?
Yeah, for, for big bulk items, yes.
I already got it.
You got, I knew you did.
I got one out there.
So again, that's, uh, four one zero five four eight three one seven seven to arrange pickup of your electronic recycling stuff.
Or large bulk.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Have your Veterans Day to our veterans.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned.